YouTube any second.
Hi.
Hi.
I just emailed everyone. Updated ordinance twenty four twenty and I wrote on the email what I updated. So Bob, there'll be no need to amend it since they'll be voting on the last ordinance I sent out to add to the agenda, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is the first reading, right?
Right, was, yeah, first reading and it's got to be voted to be added to the agenda.
All right, now, you don't have to amend it.
Thank you.
Roger won't be here today. He's asked to be excused.
But who am I gonna argue with?
I'll pick one.
And we will need to discuss tonight if we're gonna go back to six or five thirty meetings or what we're going to do for committee. Sherry had asked for extra time for tonight because of the budget. And also next meeting, we'll need to start fifteen minutes early for the public hearing for the budget.
Chad, how are you? Lynn is the only one left? How are you? Good, everybody hear me okay?
Got you.
Just not. I think I'm freezing up here. You guys are frozen, something. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? I was pretending to be frozen.
Cliff, I'm actually a little warm. I don't think I'm that frozen. I'm not either.
It's seventy-five degrees in my office. Yeah, I know.
I'll be here tomorrow, Thursday.
Huh?
I'll be here tomorrow or Thursday to put some more free on it, so.
Oh, I didn't know we were having trouble.
I have five thirty-one. And has a problem earlier. I couldn't get it earlier. Anybody here from Glenn? Hello? Anybody here from Glenn? Missler?
No. No.
Let's go grab.
The auditor's gonna need about twenty to twenty-five minutes tonight, so we'll make sure we give her that time for the budget and if there's any questions. So we'll go ahead and get started. Are we streaming live now?
Yep, we're live.
All right, I want to welcome everybody in the viewing audience as well as our persons and administration. And we'll open up the meeting. My mind's acting a little funny here, so I'm freezing and going, so if you lose me, that's what's going on here. Mr. Mayor, we'll start with you.
I just wanted to say happy Tuesday. Usually it's happy Monday, but Tuesday. First off, like, thank everyone, you know, for daylight. It was Memorial Day holiday. Just wanted to thank everyone, you know, who has sacrificed their lives for our state and our country and very proud to be an American. Also want to had cemetery visits. Want to thank Public Works Director Kevin Shire and also thank Cemetery Supervisor Darren McCormick for job well done on all three of our city cemeteries with the week of rain. The cemeteries really look nice and presentable. Probably some people came from out of town and I think we should be very proud of our employees and our facilities and how they looked for the holiday. I was at South Lawn Cemetery on Thursday and they were mowing and pouring down rain, so their dedication's appreciated along with everyone who dedicated their lives to our city and our country. So a couple of things on the plate. I'll make it quick. I like to talk, but we need the three readings tonight, please, for the Historic Preservation Committee. Add a couple people to it. UTV ordinance, we can, there's no hurry because I want some public input on that, so any discussion or any questions you guys may have, please ask. Working on vacant houses and high grass, want to invite the public to please report vacant houses, high grass. Cityshockton.com, you can report an issue and it will go directly to Property Code Investigator. And we have been, we are going to start documentation Facebook-wise on properties that are lighted and just, I don't want to say call people out on them, but we're definitely going to make it public who, what property owners are not maintaining their properties and and what we keep battling with them because it's like anything else. Most people do the right thing and take care of their stuff and then there are people who just refuse to and I believe our duty as a, as a city government to take care of the way our city looks and definitely take care of neighborhoods. There's one house in every neighborhood that makes the whole neighborhood look bad and it's, you know, I've taken that upon one thing to fix. And definitely want people to reach out to us, not only council members, but regular citizens, you know, it's not, it's not telling on anyone. It's not being a snitch. It's definitely helping the aesthetics and the way that our community looks. I just want to get everyone involved. Over the week, I took some comments about open burning within our city and actually spoke to fire chiefs this morning. And there is out in the city. There's not a lot of issues in neighborhoods where the neighbor each other and everyone gathers around the fire at someone's house. There'll be an issue in neighborhoods where maybe someone wants to one-up their neighbor and get at them and then they call the fire department. The fire department comes out. Really fires. There's a whole, it's fifteen oh five point thirteen open burning. My recommendation as of right now, so I give you, give you some clarity or you give me some clarity is we need to come up with a way that we can legislate common sense. I really, to me, it's not a big deal to me to have a fire pit, but to have a bonfire to, you know, have twenty-foot flames. I mean, it's the fire department's doing their job by coming out and telling people, hey, put that fire out because they're basically, the way the ordinance reads that they're for cooking food for human consumption. And you can't burn garbage. You can't burn landscape waste, you know, any, any solid waste you can't burn. It'd be an EPA issue. I really don't want to say no fires within the city, but if people can't be responsible about that, about the fires and fire pits, then that's what we're gonna have to go. I just wanted to start the conversation on that and any questions you might have, I will definitely answer them for you.
Cliff, you're muted. Thank you. Just want the ordinance committee to be aware that if you have any questions. I believe that's a good ordinance and Mayor's one to put in. All right, is that all? No questions for the mayor? All right, Max?
Um, not too much tonight, Cliff, but outside of the ordinary. I don't know if everybody's aware or not, if you remember the eighth, the Ninth Street Water Project that got turned down for grant monies last year, we're actually resubmitting that. Looks like we got a good shot at getting that. I know Sherry worked on it today, so that'll be resubmitted. Keep your fingers crossed. And then we're still working with ODOT, Arcadis and Omega putting together grants. I believe they call it the Small Cities Grant to get funding for new traffic lights. That'd be control boxes as well as all new LED traffic lights, so. That grant, you can get up to a million dollars on that, so. Kevin Butner from Omega is assisting me on writing the grant. Hopefully we'll know something about that in the fall. That's why we've done that systemic traffic study with ODOT and Arcadis, so.
Max?
Yes.
How many lights are you looking at? All of them or certain target?
If, you know, if we got the full amount of money, we could probably get them all.
Wow.
So as you know, ours are very outdated. The new ones we have is on the bridge and the ones at the school, which are, what, five or six years old now, so. We want to get preemptive devices on all of them for the fire department as well, so. Hopefully we'll get that grant. And really just normal operations. Anybody has any questions or concerns, let me know.
Have you heard any more on the bridge project?
No. Just still on schedule. As you know, they're painting underneath of it. They have not given, we have not had an update meeting with the COVID going on. They talked to Steve Miller last week. As you know, he was the engineer on that project for ODOT. He didn't give me any indication that they're looking to have it completed before August, which is a normal time, original timeframe. Anybody seen that hole we had dug over there at COTC? That was due to that. There's some seepage out on Route Thirty-Six. I was concerned about where we run the new water line last winter, where we bored under the pour lane. We done a two-hour pressure test, a hundred and fifty PSI, and I think we satisfied ODOT that it's not water, the problem. We may have hit a underground spring or something like that. So what, right now, it's hard to tell. So. Anyway, that's where that's at.
Any questions for Max? All right, thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Bob, you have anything?
Yeah, just to let you know that Mr. Gilbert has requested that the Supreme Court of Ohio take up his case, which will further delay the teardown of the houses. There's no guarantee that they're gonna take up the case, but usually it takes them a couple of months to determine if they will accept jurisdiction of the case. And I'll keep you apprised. I will be filing a response to his request here shortly. What's next, Washington? I don't think he has anywhere to go after this one.
We have nothing for.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
But you're froze.
Perfect. Jeff, you have anything for now? Jeff, can you hear me?
Yep, I hear you now. Basically, we're, we're mowing properties. We have taken on a college student to mow. He's doing a great job. We've mowed several to this point. We've got five or six more so far this week that we've got online to mow. We've cleaned up one property. We had a property that Mike will be aware of up on North Ninth Street that we've been with for the last year or so. Those folks finally, we come to an understanding and they hired a guy today that cleaned up the front of the property and got all the stuff hauled out. And they're going to enclose the carport, so that will be like a garage and that property looks a whole lot better than it did, so I think that was a win. Kaylee and I was on a call last week for about an hour with the National Main Street Association, talking about our historical districts, the downtown district. They asked some really good questions. They said this will be a three-year program, so they'll be reaching back out a few times to talk to somebody. They were interviewing, I'm not sure how many. I think Kaylee and I were together, but I think they're got, Tom Barcroft is going to be interviewed with someone else. And I think there was five or six sets of people they were going to interview with, so hopefully we'll get some, some, some good information back out of that and maybe get the, the opportunity to get some grant money out of it. So if you have questions, I have nothing else.
Any question for Jeff? Okay, we'll move on. Yes.
Max, can I jump back? I did forget one thing. Down at, it looks like we are going to have some summer rec baseball and softball going on since the governor changed the orders. The guys worked all weekend. Looks like some baseball will take place this week, weather depending, but we've done a lot of mowing and getting fields ready and fences repaired and I know the rec guys done a good job over the weekend, so we should be ready this week for whatever they want to do. But Isaac's got some stuff scheduled, so through Kids America, so it's like we're gonna play some baseball this summer.
All right. Anybody else? Thanks, Max. All right, Sherry, you're on.
Okay, hello, everybody. First, I'm just gonna go over the normal stuff that I would have. Municipal court came up today. They need some additional appropriations in their one oh three computerization fund. The judge had been building that up a little bit and they did some computer upgrades downstairs and essentially used all their appropriations. So they're requesting another, an additional ten thousand dollars. And I don't have any problem with it because they have plenty of room in the budget and the cash is there for that, so if we can have that, I'll get that to Cherry to have on the agenda for the June eighth meeting. And I'll just ask that on that meeting, if you can pass that in emergency because she has some outstanding bills that she needs to be getting paid on that, so. Then the next thing I have, I received a letter today from the Park District. You know, when they did their park levy several years ago, they committed, but there's nothing in writing that they have to give us a portion of their proceeds. That's what they had passed the levy on. I received a letter from them today. It says, "The Kuschakton County Park District has been notified by the Kuschakton County Auditor that due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, they are reducing our estimated levy proceeds for the second half of twenty twenty by a total of four percent." "The Board of Park Commissioners has agreed to reduce the distribution to the other county parks by the same percentage, that being four percent." So we already received their first half, basically a donation, eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, so they're anticipating their second half to be ten thousand nine hundred and two dollars for us, so I thought I'd just share that with you. Next thing, I had just emailed to you before the meeting and I'm sorry, I thought I emailed it. I scanned it to send to you and then when I got in here for the meeting, I realized I didn't actually scan or send the document to you, but I just emailed you. It's called Bank Report. You know, every, every month I bring the ledger up for you to sign. And the auditors look for those signatures on there, but having kind of a little pre-conference with one of the state auditors the other day, I can go ahead and have you approve this bank report monthly, like you do with the detailed check report and the cash statement, and as long as it's reflected in the minutes that you have received it and approved it in the minutes, that will suffice rather than me bringing the book up to you and actually you physically signing the ledger. So I don't know if you all have had a chance to just kind of click this open yet, but this is simply, this bank report is just simply the ending balance on it is how much cash we have in the bank. That's all it is. And that always ties out with your cash statement that you receive. So I will start to send this along with, you know, the detailed check reports that then announce in the monthly cash statement. So if you feel comfortable approving it in the minutes tonight, that's fine. If not, I can hang on to it till, you know, the meeting on the eighth and we can just catch up the March, April, and at that time you'll have the, the May bank report also. So whatever your pleasure is on that, but just a heads up that I'll be sending those out now, you know, monthly rather than carrying that book up for you. So any questions on that stuff, the regular? No? All good? All right, hopefully you all received the budget today and we'll just go down through it. And you probably received my email because Mark and I were going over it this afternoon and I, looking at it on his computer screen, I saw it was, I still, I didn't correct the header on it, so it said twenty twenty budget, but it's, I have since corrected mine and it's the twenty twenty-one budget. Though I always think it's important to kind of go down through this, especially for, you know, our new council members and this being your first time to, to see this. So page one and two is, and I'll, I'll, I'll put out here for the public, if anybody wants to see this, just shoot me an email, give me a phone call and I'll be happy to share this with you. So that's for the public. Page one and two is all just our general fund. And it starts, the first part is just the revenues. The local taxes that you'll see, property tax, trailer tax, municipal income tax is the big one for us. You know, the twenty twenty estimates right now on this general fund, the total, the four million two hundred ninety-four, six hundred and fifty, that's exactly where I have our budget setting, our expected revenue setting with the budget commission right now. So, you know, these figures adjust throughout the year. Honestly, I think I've already have adjusted them three or four times this year. Last year, I think throughout the course of the year, I might have adjusted six times. Previous years, I might have adjusted twelve times. So, you know, that document changes all the time. And it is, you know, like I was sharing with Mark, it's all pretty much historical data and because our revenue is what our revenue is, there's not a whole lot of fluctuation in it with the exception of, in the general fund, income tax and then charges for services, which down below. Our next section is intergovernmental revenues. That's a local government. That is local government funding. As you know, we receive the bulk of that from the county. And then we get a small portion from the city. That's the, this, the count, this, or excuse me, from the state. The state is, this is the portion that they, they took away from us, you know, several years ago. We used to get two hundred plus thousand from them and they, you know, they took that away. They just started back in July, sending us a little bit, about three to four thousand dollars a month. This month I received eighteen hundred dollars. So, you know, it's just gonna play by year. I'll keep watching that as we go. So that's where we stand with that. We do get cigarette tax. We get liquor permits. The property tax allocation, that is the portion that comes from the state. That's the homestead and rollback. So if the, the county would tell you, the, the county will give you, to you in a whole, that upper property tax, that four hundred and two thousand, for me to match the county figures, I have to add that homestead and rollback. State grants, that's just a little bit of state subsidy that the Health Department receives. The other, an intergovernmental revenue is from the school that we build for our recreation department to do the field maintenance at the softball fields, the baseball fields and the football fields. And then the Cherokees pay for our recreation department to maintain the, the baseball field for their, their play. Charges for services, those are fees that we collect through the cemetery and the Health Department. Fines, license permits, those are some vital stats that we receive through the Health Department, municipal court permits that the mayor's office may take in. And that fluctuates every year. The miscellaneous is interest income and our franchise fee from Spectrum. Other sources, that is where we bill the county for two-fifths of some municipal court charges that we can do. It's Judge Francis' salary. I think the probation officer, bailiff, his clerk and the judge's insurance, medical insurance. So we usually get about a hundred to a hundred and five thousand dollars from that. The other portion of it, the admin portion, is where we, we can by ordinance take administration fees from the water fund and the sewer fund. So right now, we've been taking about fifty-five thousand. Several years ago, it kind of capped out a hundred and ten from each one that we could take and it's based off of the mayor's auditor, service director, council wages and PRS. But just over time, you know, technically I could probably be taking a lot more, but since the general fund, you know, became a lot, you know, more stable and healthier, we just kind of been, I've just been kind of cutting that down and letting the money stay in those funds. So that's our revenue. And like I said, that four million two ninety-four, that's exactly where I have it set with the budget commission as of today. So going forward for the estimate of twenty twenty-one, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what's gonna happen with income tax. We'll just have to watch and see and, you know, with the filing deadline now July fifteenth, this budget, the estimate is due July twentieth. And you'll have it passed by then. So I just decreased it a little bit because my budgeting style, I would prefer to estimate my revenue low and my expenses high, just to be safe. But as I said before, this changes. I can change this budget every single month, once a week, whatever I wanted. The county auditors probably wouldn't like me if I did it that often, but, you know, technically I can. So, you know, I have reduced the revenue there, you know, somewhat. Not sure what's gonna happen with the local government funds. You know, the county will be reducing us a little bit, you know, not quite sure yet. So we'll move on to the expenditures. Um, security of persons and property, personal services, that is the portion that the general fund supports our fire department. So, and with that, we pay, we usually appropriate some for salaries and for the health insurance is what that takes care of there. Contractual services, that's our sheriff's contract. And you'll see from nineteen to twenty, there's a little bit of a jump. Well, it looks like a big jump because in nineteen, I was seeing that, you know, we, we had extra money in that the sheriff's safety, law enforcement's safety security fund, that one twelve fund. And, you know, that's what that money's for. So I was taking more money out of there to pay the sheriff's contract rather than the general. So I was taking more money out of there to pay the sheriff's contract rather than the general fund. Because I, I want to spend more out of that fund. Than our general fund. This year, since we took, you know, took more out of there. You know, I anticipate being, having to use a little bit more out of the general fund. And then plus with the contract increase and the contract will increase for twenty twenty-one. So I figure it's going to have to go up there too. Supplies and material is actually the only thing we play out of that is street lighting. So that's our AEP bills for streetlights. Public health, that is our health department and our cemetery. You know, and it's gone up quite a bit from nineteen to twenty. And I had noted, you know, the cemetery budget has actually increased twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight percent since two thousand and eighteen. You know, we did some hiring down there and. Quite frankly, you know, their appropriations were always so low, they would just. Operate on minimal amounts of appropriation. So we have just. Increased that through, you know, throughout the time here. So public health, that is anything to do with. Like I said, health and cemetery, the contractual services and supplies and material contractual services are mostly, could be anything that we have like. With seat consulting or. Our insurance is what mostly those are. So then over on the second page, leisure time activities, that is simply our recreation department. So not a whole lot of change there. It's gone down a little bit. That's mostly in part to not having a. The director at the, you know, at the thirty-plus thousand dollars a year. So that was reduced there a little bit. Community environment, personal services, that's what we pay for our civil service commission. And our sealer weights and measures contract. That we have with the county and that contract is for sixty-five hundred dollars a year. And same with the contractual services, that's insurance. The supplies and material, that has increased over the past couple of years because that's where we have added, I think roughly about thirty-five thousand in appropriations. For property maintenance. So Jeff can, you know, have those mowers out there, you know, if we may have to potentially tear something down. You know, that could be there. The appropriations there for that, for that use. General government, personal services, general government takes in basically everything else. It's the mayor, the service director, council treasurer. Law director, anything here at city hall. Auditor's office, income tax. And again, here I will state that when you jump down to the expenditures, five million one hundred forty-one thousand four hundred ninety-two. That is where our appropriations are setting right now as of today's meeting. You know, comparing it to last year, you know, it's, it's basically a million dollars more. I will say. We will probably never, we, we will never spend all those appropriations. We rarely, rarely ever do. But you know, there's just increase in the personal services, the contractual services. We've, you know, added a lot of stuff here at city hall. Our supplies and material. Other uses, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand, that is income tax refunds that Jackie may have. And the income tax rebates that go to craft foods and Riverview High School. And. The rebates, I think that was ten years and we might be in year five or six. I have to look back on that. But the split between that income tax refunds usually about a hundred thousand and then that rebate two hundred and twenty-five. But like I said, keep in mind, this is, these are always just estimates, estimates. So how you do down at the bottom, you have your total expenses, revenues and over, under. The expenditures, you know, and if these all fell true to word, if, if that revenue came in exactly. How it's on their estimate and we spent every bit of those appropriations. We would have spent, we would spend eight hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars more than what we've brought, brought in. I don't ever see that happening. But that's just, you know, mathematically how it works out. What it, what it's showing you then is you're just eating into your balance carrot and forward. Because we started the year with the one million five hundred and seventy-six thousand. So the math there, if we would do that scenario, it would take our cash down to seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You bring it over into the twenty-one or yeah, the twenty-one column. You know, then you could potentially getting down to three hundred and fifteen. I don't see that happening. I don't want that to happen. But like I said, these are all estimates. I was sharing with Mark, it's, you know, sometimes the process seems like it's all kind of backwards. Because we have to file our budget here, which are just estimated numbers. Come, you know, this fall, we'll do our appropriations. Then after that, at the first of January, I have to find, I have to file the final, the certificate of estimated resources. And in that filing in January, that's where I'll have all the actual numbers of twenty twenty. And then, you know, go from there and see where we're at and, you know, hopefully we'll be, you know, and I know we will, we'll be really conservative with our appropriations. So then that's, that certificate will never exceed our appropriations in the fall. So that's just a quick. You know, rundown of the general fund. Is there any questions on those? Anyone from the new? New council members, Michelle, Kaylee. All good. You guys can mull it over and, you know, feel free to reach out to me and call me. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering on our, the estimate, is it generally that much higher? Every year?
On the, on the expense or revenue?
Well, I was just, I circled a lot of things in the estimate column where it's a lot more than it was the previous year. Under services and, and lots of services, things like that. I'm just wondering when we're, each year as we estimate. Do we estimate that much higher?
On the expense side, Michelle? Well, what that is, that's right where the appropriations are setting. So as of right now, council has given permission to spend that much money. So I mean, so for twenty twenty, it's still an estimate. Because, you know, we don't have those actual numbers yet. But that's where the appropriations are setting right now. And I'll say that's, that's probably a little bit high. I mean. A lot, you know, a lot of it probably too is our insurance went up. So that, our health insurance. That factor, you know, quite a bit in there because those numbers are in there. That's probably, that's probably a, a big bulk of it was the insurance and, you know, just even with the wages, the wages go up. You know, we had the, the union contracts, which there's a few union people in the general fund. And just even, you know, the non-bargaining, you know, pay, pay increases each year. So when there's pay increases. You know, your BWC goes up, your Medicare goes up, your PRS goes up. So that all, you know, takes an account to that. We've hired some new people, so that even adds to the insurance escrow amount too. So. But yeah, it's, it's probably a little bit higher, you know, than normal. But, you know, like I said, I just tried, I tied out exactly to where the appropriations are setting, just to give you. That worst case scenario.
So Sheri, as you're doing the budget estimates. Is there a point, like a number figure, like when you're looking at it and you're, you say, okay, this is too high. We need to really pay attention to this. Like is there a flag number that I'm looking for when I look over this budget with you or with everyone?
You know, I wouldn't say in this process right now, Michelle, because. I have seriously filed these before with that ending balance being a negative.
Okay.
You know, when our times were hurting and that's okay to file that right now, that, you know, that would show that ending in, you know, the year ending in a negative. That's where it comes out to in January. That's where it needs to budget. And that could have to be, you know, we have to be very careful when we do the appropriations. You know, come this fall. And then, you know, that's where I'll tie that all out with that certificate in January. So, but no, there, I mean. I was kind of, I mean, I knew the appropriations were higher. But you know, I guess when I'm really seeing it in black and white, I was like, wow. We really have those appropriations up there, you know, this year. But like I said, we never, we never ever spend all those appropriations. It's, it's very rare for us to spend all the appropriations. So I was gonna, I can look real quick here on. My computer. Last year. We ended our appropriations. Our general fund appropriations were set at four million seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. But we only spent four point one thousand. So see where I'm going with that? We had that permission to spend that other money, but we, you know, I just don't agree with. Spending to spend come year in, you know, there might, you know, in the past be, oh, hey, I have appropriations left, let's spend them. You know, I just, I really don't, I don't like that philosophy.
I agree, yeah.
So, but yeah, you know, I look for our expenses just to be around four point two, four point three. Hopefully, that's what I'm hoping.
All right, that's helpful.
Right. And, and actually, me and Sheri spoke to the. With the carryover with our ending balance, we do have cushion. So with that negative number, we at least have a positive number behind it. So, you know, even if it gets lean, we have a little bit of a cushion. So that's kind of. Being in business and being in government, I know you see that, those. And you're like, whoa, but it's, you know, we. The money is there, we just have to, you know, really watch what we're doing. And, and I'm, I'm like Sheri, I'd rather. Aim high and. Yeah. The way this is, is looking. So the positive is we have the nest egg. The negative is we don't know how much of that. Use to, to balance out or, and we're going to try our hardest and I agree with. At the end of the year, it's not, we appropriated this, let's spend it, let's. You know, if we need something, we'll get it, but let's not open the checkbook at the end of the year and say, it's still there, let's spend it. Like we said we were going to, so, and we're in agreement with that. So we're just. I mean, it's, it's going to be a, a year to remember. So I mean, at least we're fit for a positive number. So that's where I'm. That's where I'm more comfortable than seeing like a negative number on top of a negative number. So.
You just don't want to see that ending balance as a negative. And why I have before, we've been through, we have been, you know, we've been through it. And like I said, I've submitted the budget that way before. We, we have done it because, you know. At that moment, that's what it is. But then we have to, you know, through the times, we have to figure it out. And my goal is for us to always that cash, that general fund, I would love to always keep that, you know. At a million or above. So. You know, hopefully, you know, throughout the course of this year, we'll see how much this is going to affect our general fund.
Sheri, have you, have you noticed anything yet, like as far as the general fund, money coming in?
You know, the income tax, Jackie actually told me the other day and we'll have her reports here at the end of this week. The other day she was actually looking like she was going to be up so far for this month. So you know, who knows how this is coming in with people and. You know, I, I just, you know, she'll. City Hall is going to be closed Friday because AEP is doing their power work that they were going to do a couple of weeks ago and it got, you know. Cancelled. So we're actually closing our month on the twenty-eighth this year or this month rather than. On the twenty-ninth on that Friday, since city hall is going to be closed and we're not going to have any electricity. So I'll know more here pretty quickly. The only thing that might skew it just a little bit is she gets her gateway. And that comes in the last day of the month. So that might have to carry over into, into get posted into June, just, you know, but it is what it is on that. But as of the other day, she was saying she was, she, she, we were up a little bit, so. Keep your fingers crossed that we'll continue that way. But I'll keep moving along here. Page three, fire pension. In your property tax, there is a small inside mileage that a portion has to go to. What is called the fire pension fund. And it's based off in a higher revised code, that's probably, I don't know how old, it's just very old. That local governments have to set aside. So that is about fifty-seven thousand dollars fifty-six for estimated for next year. And that just helps offset what the fire fund would pay for the Ohio Police and Fire Pension. Page four, exhibit three just starts with our special revenue funds. And those are all pretty self-explanatory. The retirement payouts, that is the portion that we have allocated. From income tax that goes into the retirement fund. And. We can put seventy-five thousand dollars a year in there and it adds up. And then what that money is used for, it's kind of, think of it, it's a reserve account. Think of a rainy day fund. For when general fund employees retire and they have, you know, some of them could have, you know, a pretty good payout. If they've been here long enough with those nine hundred and sixty hours and vacation pay. That is to, that's what that money is used for. So it's kind of a little, you know. Revenue account that we set there for, for those retirements. The next few there with the municipal courts. That's the judge's indigent fund, computer funds, special projects, probation fund. Actually, I can delete that municipal court CCA line. I see that now that, that was grant money that we used to get, that's long gone. So I'm going to clean that up and take that whole line out of there. And then our street fund. You know, this is the only one that's kind of maybe a little bit questionable for me yet to. Just with the, you know, we were supposed to get the additional mon- money for gasoline tax. Now they're saying it shouldn't come in like it is because of this whole COVID thing. But as I reported, I think two weeks ago. I was still kind of seeing the same amount of money come in. So I don't know if it's going to hit yet. I'm not sure. So that's where I have that setting, but you know. That, that street fund could get down there low. That's frankly, that's probably one that worries me the most right now. But I just keep an eye on it and work with Kevin and, you know, Kevin's very good at, you know, watching his budget and knowing what he can and can't do. So. We'll just keep an eye on that one. Home health fund, there's about a hundred and eighty-five thousand in there. I'm not into, there shouldn't be any other revenue coming in. I'm not anticipating any, well, there might be a few weeks. No, there'll be expenses yet this year. I doubt in twenty twenty-one. Quite frankly, since we dissolved the home health agency in May of nineteen. This cash is just going to have to set here for a while. Till we determine enough time is going by, there isn't any old outstanding bills, any expenses with it. Then at some point, most likely, that money will revert back to the general fund. So that's just going to have to set there for a while. Food sanitation. That's food license that Joe Garrett, he goes out and does all the inspections. So he brings in about thirty-four thousand dollars a year. And I usually spend every bit of it towards, he has a few state fees that he has to pay and rest of it goes towards his salary. Same with house trailer. We get about nine hundred and twenty-five dollars in. Kind of let it sit there and I let it build up just a little bit and I can use that towards his salaries. Perpetual care, we have a couple CDs that earn interest. And the money goes into this perpetual care and then that can be used for the cemeteries. We have the cemetery endowment fund. And there's interest from there that goes into here. We can never use that principle. So that interest goes into the perpetual care fund that we can spend. Seven and a half state routes. Again, that could be a little questionable. I'm just still going to keep the estimate where it's at, but depending on how that gasoline tax comes in, we'll just see with there. The next two CDBG, those with the higher regional development. I'm just drawing a complete blank on her name. Oh my gosh, I'm going to say Hannah, but I don't think, I'm so sorry. Anyway, Dale Hardwell's office, this is what they're estimating that they'll have for next year. MVL, that's the motor vehicle license tax, what we get in with there. And like I said, it'll probably be. And like I said, it'll probably be delayed some this year, recreation, um, not anticipating anything more coming in. I figure we'll probably maybe spend it all in twenty twenty one, eventually start to solve that, I, you know, not sure there. Rosco perpetual care, we get a little bit of money in for that. And then your next big one is the fire fund. So it's usually always pretty good, um, storm sewer. That's where people pay, I believe, a quarter on their, um, on their water bill. And that goes into the, that's, we usually spend fifteen thousand dollars a year with the soil and water conservation. Lording tax or street levy fund. And then that's where we was talking about the safety, security and law enforcement. So I think we should, you know, we need to spend just about all that we bring in on that towards the sheriff's contract. Plus we've been, you know, we've been spending trying to. We, we say we put appropriations of a hundred thousand that we're gonna spend, you know, on our own security. Be a, you know, cameras at parks or, you know, security here at city hall or wherever it may be. Moving on to debt service, that is our second street debt and Chestnut Street debt. That money comes right off the top of income tax collections. Our second street debt, um, is gonna be paid off in July. So I think that second, second street was paved ten years ago. And we're paying off that loan in July. Capital improvements, um, the first one is just our four oh one capital improvement. That can be spent on anything here at city hall. Typically in the past, we've been doing about a hundred thousand, um, towards paving. Not sure we're gonna be able to do that this year. Out of there. And then the fire capital improvement, the fire chief is always really good, tells me, you know, what he plans on spending. The next is enterprise funds and enterprise funds, meaning those funds that water sewage, um, solid waste. Those funds can. Make revenue. You want them to make mon, you want those to be money makers. And, um. So, you know, this are pretty, oh, self-explanatory on those. The contingency fund, I think what I've said, you know, I think I've told you guys before, I think it's, um, five percent of the water income. Must go into the contingency fund, same with the sewer. And then the water debt reduction is, is in there and that's been, I think, nine and a quarter, that's on the water bill or nine seventy five, that's on the water bill. So the next page, internal service, um, funds, that's our insurance escrow. Um, and that's basically our health insurance and then unclaimed funds. The next are fiduciary funds. This is money that comes in, but that is not city money. Fire pension, we talked about that before, I also, you know, have to report it up, but, you know, earlier. On page two and then again here. State patrol. State patrol fines come in down municipal court, fifty percent of it goes to the general fund. The other fifty percent goes to state patrol fund, state patrol transfer. Then the money comes in one month, the next month, um, my office sends it out and it goes directly to the Kushten County Law, Law Library. So that's my in and out bid bond and insurance. Um, when we have bids, um, think about our housekeeping bids that we had and most of them send like a three hundred dollar check or they might have bonds. Cherry gets that money in, it goes into that fund, after the bids are done and whatever, Cherry sends that money back out to them. The insurance part of that is that there would be a house fire in Kushten. A portion of the, um, insurance proceeds, I think it's ten percent, but. I won't swear to that, but I'm pretty certain it's ten percent. Comes to the city. And, um, it's held in this bid bond insurance fund. And then after a certain period of time, the fire chief goes out and he inspects the property. To make sure, you know, if there's structural damage outside, whatever it might be, that it's all up to code. And then he releases the money and then my office, we send it on to the homeowner. Um, and your Jeds are, you all, you all know what the Jeds are. So the Tuscan Franklin County Jeds. Page six, um, improvements, that's just an estimate of what we think we may spend in some capital improvement. The first two, um, are, um, out of the four oh one capital improvement fund. And then you see the street levy fund. And then fire capital improvement. And the next, um, exhibit five, I believe, is just the listing of our bonds and our loans that we have. So we have outstanding, um, loans, about, um, eleven million two hundred fifty six nine sixty two. The next page is really just recap all those first, um, few pages there. So, um. With that said. You know, the certificate, the official certificate of estimated resources, total wide for the city. On that's page seven, twenty seven million dollars. Um, and like I said, those are just adding up all those different types of funds. So. And page eight and nine, again, just recaps that I have to have with, with the sheets. So I know I went quickly, I tried to go quick, so not to take up too much time, but, um, if there's any other questions I can answer. Or if you guys wanna, you know, take your time and look it over and give me a call. You're welcome to comment. You know, I can meet with you or if you, you know, whatever you wanna do. Be happy to answer any questions on it.
Are there any questions for the auditor? At six twenty three PM. We'll look at, um, any reports from the finance committee?
Um, I just wanted to report that, um, I was able to get a hold of Ian Cornell and we spoke for a while. Um, I told her we hadn't forgotten about her. I know she was disappointed we had tabled that ordinance. But she said that, um, most of the programming is out. But she still, um, is going to be doing things. She's, um, gonna hang some things, more of a visual presentation there. She reported that she still has a regular maintenance issues go ongoing there. Insurance, electric, and they had some damage, um, that Hathaway's had to take care of. So. That being said, you know, that we just kind of chatted about maybe the future, you know, whether it was sustainable. I don't know. And, um, so, um, I just told her that we haven't forgotten her. And, you know, at some point we wanna revisit this, I would think. So I don't know what other council members, how they feel on, you know, how we're gonna go forward with this. Maybe we can offer some in-kind, um, support through maybe mowing, weeding, maintenance of the area. I'm just not sure.
Any other thoughts from council? Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, yep.
Ordinance committee. Any report from those around the ordinance committee? Your captain is out today. Infrastructure. Okay. Rant and economic development. Housing and property maintenance. Safety services. Parks and Recreation.
I, I was just, um, are, are we, um, gonna open the parks back up anytime or, I mean, is there any word on that?
Head direct to the mayor?
Answer, we're definitely wait.
Go ahead, Chad.
No, no, you go right, you go.
We're, I mean, we're just waiting direction from the state. We've been following state protocol thus far, so we're just kind of waiting word. I, I would say it's probably coming pretty soon with. Everything else that's opened up. So I, I don't. Yeah, I, I, I'm trying to sift through the regulations and some I agree with. And some I'm like, why? You know, can you, how can you allow this, but you can't allow that? I mean, we're almost to the point where. I don't wanna call it nonsense. I mean, I wanna protect people, but it's like, how can you have a wedding reception with three hundred people? Like impossible everywhere in the country. But you can't swing on a swing at a park. Like, um, you know, I just. I could have done without this the rest of my life and I'm sure. We'll keep you up to date. I drive by the park every day and. Hey, it'd be nice to see kids playing on the park, but. Really at this point, don't wanna go against state orders and wanna try to comply as much as possible. So that's kind of where we're at.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Insurance committee? Rules committee, anything?
Nothing.
All right. You all had a chance to look at the agenda. Looking for someone to be appointed from council to take the train for public records? How many of you have not had that public records training from the state? What we all can do is ask someone to represent council, otherwise we all have to go. So is there a volunteer? Kaylee? Thank you. Uh, I'm sure, uh, clerk will give you on the instructions and something should be coming out, you have to sign up for, you can go online and do that. We're gonna appreciate it. It's a very good, good course. I'm sure you'll learn a lot from it. Thank you for. Someone else?
I would encourage all council members. I mean, I know you can, you sign a dozen me. But I believe, and Bob can answer, but I believe now you can sign up and it's even online. So, I mean, you really learn, um, you know, a lot of good information. I know, you know, it, it, you know, it takes some time. But I, I would personally encourage all of them. And I said I was going to reach out. To the auditor of state's office and see if I can go ahead and get another session scheduled here in Kushten County. And I did this, I don't know, gosh, the, the days go by so quickly. I mean, it's been several years ago that I organized one and it was held at Frontier Power. So, um. You know, if I can, if I can do that and we can get it held right here, there's no charge for it. It just takes somebody to take the initiative and to, to reach out to them to get that scheduled and, you know. I don't know yet if they're gonna be doing it, you know, with all this going on, if there'll be scheduling yet this year. But even if you guys would have time, if it falls into, you know, into twenty twenty one, you would have, you know, still time, but. I thought I would go ahead and see if I can get that set up because, um, and if so, if we can get that here locally, I would really encourage all of you to. To attend it, because, you know, you're gonna, you'll, you'll learn some valuable information.
Can we have, can we have, uh, Cherry send that information to all council?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yes, I think it has to be in the minutes, uh, if we're gonna appoint someone. I mean, if we could all go, that'd be great. I went to the winter frontier. That was a good, uh, good session.
Right, yeah, it would be great for any and all to go, but we need to cover our bases for the state audit. And appoint someone to represent council.
Actually, we needed to not only represent council, but represent the auditor, mayor and law director's office as well. Last year we ran into that problem because our meeting minutes did not reflect that. And I ended up having to have one of my office members do the training as well.
Okay.
I went to the training myself. And I went to the training, yeah, Denell and I went to it.
Due to me, Bob, I didn't know that they could represent your office as well.
We didn't either until last year when Cherry and I started looking at it, so.
Nice.
Okay, well, we got that covered very good. Anything else anybody has? All right, we have registered council at just seven PM. It is now six thirty one. So we'll see you all at seven and our viewers, you're welcome to come also. Thank you folks.